Bienvenidos al Foro de candidatos del Cónsul de la ciudad de Ely, patrocinado por la marca de Ely y el Club de Rotarías. A los que les gusta, gracias. Vamos a empezar con este, y el otro de la semana pasada. Veo algunas caras famosas de la semana pasada. Nos divertimos mucho, y esperamos replicar eso esta noche. Mi nombre es Joe Weise, soy un dueño local y fisherman. No sé, conoces a muchos de ustedes. Es muy divertido, este es el segundo evento en una fila donde he estado aquí, y es muy divertido mirar alrededor. Hay un gran grupo de personas aquí con las que he tenido conversaciones sobre todo tipo de cosas. Enseñando, discordando, conversación espírita, de una manera u otra. Y es muy genial ver una gran gama de nuestra comunidad que se importa lo suficiente para estar aquí, así que gracias por venir. Muchas gracias a los candidatos, Jerome DeBels, Paul Kess, Frederica Musgrave y Emily Rose, por participar esta noche. Un quinto candidato, John Latnann, no estará en la audiencia. Gracias a Ana Heil y Lacey Squire por ser nuestras preguntas, y a Carolyn Owens y Tom Moore por ser los cronistas. Así que, gracias a todos. Solo un poco de interés, pero toda la descubrimiento, Frederica y Emily son miembros de Ely. Y Emily también es miembro del Club de Rotarías. No se han compartido preguntas con ninguno de los candidatos, pero solo toda la descubrimiento. Bien, así que este Foro de candidatos, difiere de un debate entre candidatos. En este Foro, el candidato responderá una pregunta individual y no habrá discusión con los otros candidatos. Las preguntas han sido presentadas por el público y finalizadas por un comité de Ely y miembros del Club. Las preguntas cubrirán temas relacionados con el rol del Cónsul de la ciudad. Atitudes hacia algunos de los temas controversios que se enfrentarán en esta posición. Su visión para la ciudad y el manejo general del cónsul. Así que para empezar, cada candidato dará una declaración de 90 segundos de abertura. Después de las declaraciones de abertura, habrá varias rondas de preguntas. En cada ronda, cada candidato se preguntará una pregunta y tendrá un minuto y medio para responderla. Después de que todos los candidatos respondan su pregunta en cada ronda, se les dará 30 segundos para agregar a su respuesta o comentar cualquier pregunta hecha a los otros candidatos. Así que, ¿pueden mostrarnos cómo son estas señales? Para que ustedes sepan lo que están buscando aquí en sus caminos. Bueno, así que cuando él está pulsando esa señal de paro, sí, por favor, no me hagan hacer mi trabajo, es lo que le pido, ¿de acuerdo? Así que, los cronistas te alertarán y te detendrán cuando el tiempo esté listo. Cuando el tiempo esté listo, puedes terminar tu frase y realmente no más. Candidatos, si se desprestan, los límites pueden limitarse a su tiempo. En sus otorgos de tiempo posteriores, los candidatos esperan responder a la pregunta que se les da, pero no tienen que llenar todo el tiempo. Así que, vamos a pasar las cosas a... ¿Empezaré con Lacey?
Sí.
Bien.
Bien, comenzaremos la noche con una declaración de abertura de un minuto y medio de cada candidato. Y primero escucharemos a Paul Kess.
Gracias. Está encendido.
Sí.
Aquí está. Ven. Buenas noches, estoy aquí. Soy Paul Kess. Soy miembro de la comunidad Ely, era director de la escuela secundaria aquí. Fui estudiante en esas mesas hace mucho tiempo, y fui profesor en la universidad durante mucho tiempo. Me gusta el servicio público, he desarrollado la piel gruesa para algunos de los problemas difíciles que tengo que afrontar. Me gusta escuchar a la gente, y así es por eso que estoy corriendo. He estado aquí durante mucho tiempo, voy a continuar haciendo buen trabajo, y lo intentaré. Gracias.
Gracias, Paul. Seguidamente, escucharemos a Frederica Musgrave.
¿Está encendido?
Está encendido.
Sí. ¿Es encendido?
Sí.
Hola, mi nombre es Frederica Musgrave, y primero quiero agradecer a todos ustedes por estar aquí esta noche, escuchando nuestros entrevistas. Todavía los llamo entrevistas aunque no lo sean, y realmente aprecio que estén aquí. También quiero agradecer a los espectadores en casa que van a ver este Foro más tarde. Y nuevamente, gracias al Club de Rotarías de Ely, así como al Club de Rotarías, por patrocinar esto, así como a los trabajadores que nos mantienen en camino. Y como dije, mi nombre es Frederica Musgrave y estoy corriendo por el Cónsul de la ciudad. He estado hablando en reuniones del Cónsul de la ciudad desde el invierno de 2023. Y hace un año, amigos y yo creamos Citizens for Transparency, un sitio web donde se puede ver las grabaciones de las reuniones de Cónsul, Parque y Rec, y reuniones de planificación y zonación. Y mis amigos y yo creamos este sitio web, www.eelyminnesota.com/blog/. Después de haber visto algunos comportamientos disturbantes en una reunión de planificación y zonación, hablé en el Cónsul de la ciudad y pidió que establecieran políticas y procedimientos para codes de conducta, ética, conflicto de interés. Eso no sucedió, y me dijeron privadamente que no eran necesarios. Dispono de manera respetuosa de que no estuvieran. Y quiero agradecer al Echo de Ely por cubrir esa reunión y dejar que la gente supiera dónde estaba. He estado llamando por puertas, y la gente me ha constantemente relatado que el Congreso y el Cónsul de la ciudad son el club de los buenos chicos. Se necesita cambiar.
Gracias, Frederica. Jerome DeBels.
Bien, soy Jerome DeBels. Nací y crecí en Ely. Estuve en el Cónsul de la ciudad 31 años consecutivamente. También he dedicado mucho tiempo a esta ciudad. Cocheé el fútbol en la escuela secundaria durante 21 años. También cocheé tráfico, y he trabajado con bicicletas y cosas así. Creo que cualquiera que esté en el Cónsul de la ciudad o en algo, debe dar su tiempo a ayudar a otras personas. Y si no puede ayudar a otras personas, bueno, realmente no estás haciendo tu trabajo. Y yo, me gusta estar en el Cónsul de la ciudad, hago lo mejor que puedo. Y una cosa que dije, una cosa que dije cuando me recibí por el licenciado, el personal que me dijo, dijo: "Bueno, felicitaciones, estás en el Cónsul de la ciudad, ahora eres jefe de la ciudad, tienes mucho poder". Y le dije, le dije: "No, eso no es cierto. Soy un representante de la gente de Ely, y si no puedo ser un representante y estoy ahí por mi propio beneficio, entonces no me perteneces". Y así es como me siento agradecido, y siento que la gente debería hacer otras cosas para la comunidad también, así que muchas gracias.
Gracias, Jerome. Emily Rose.
Hola, gracias a todos por venir hoy, y por su dedicación a la política en Ely. Realmente aprecio que estén aquí. Estoy muy agradecida por la oportunidad de correr y servir a esta comunidad. Soy la mayor fan de Ely. He estado viviendo aquí todo el tiempo desde 2021. Por última vez, hice Boomerang Back, y me quedé aquí esta vez porque la comunidad es tan importante. Y realmente siento que la comunidad es el mayor activo que Ely tiene. Una de las cosas que he involucrado desde 2021 es estar en la planificación y zonación. Justo recientemente, me pasé de ser la presidenta de la planificación y zonación, y siento que hicimos grandes cambios dentro de eso, de dirigir reuniones muy productivas, y de estar en el Comité de Proyectos como el liaison de planificación y zonación. Yo me refiero a una ciudad realmente inclusiva y bienvenida. Soy contadora, así que creo que deberían ser fiscalmente responsables, y quiero escuchar todas las voces. Y creo en una economía sostenible y diversa que crea generacional riqueza. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Emily. En nuestra primera ronda de preguntas, cada candidato tendrá un minuto y medio para responder su pregunta. Entonces, en la conclusión de las cuatro preguntas, cada candidato se le dará 30 segundos para comentar cualquier cosa discutida en esta ronda de preguntas. Empezaremos con Paul Kess. La reciente cuestión de la válvula de agua ha parado temporalmente algunos negocios y está causando significativas pérdidas financieras. La infraestructura envejecida fue culpada por el problema. ¿Debería la ciudad acelerar la reemplazo de la antigua infraestructura para que la misma cosa no suceda de nuevo? ¿O hay una forma de aliviar la carga financiera para los negocios si ocurre?
Bueno, es una pregunta de dos partes. Sabes, Ely es una vieja ciudad y hay muchas viejas tuberías. No hay una forma real de predecir cuáles van a irse, así que tienes que esperar y ver qué pasa con algunos de ellos. Y la respuesta a ellos es emergencias. Y creo que muchos de ustedes son familiarizados, en particular en el verano, cuando el agua se derrumba, crece las laterales y las casas se derrumban en las calles. Eso es algo constante, las tuberías cambian. El agua en la torre fue simplemente tuberías que son cien años viejas, y así tienes que responder a esas. Teníamos un gran departamento de trabajo público, y estaban allí durante la noche para volver el agua a la torre para que Ely pudiera tener agua de nuevo. Agradezco a los trabajadores que hicieron eso. Es afortunado tener tal competencia. ¿Deberíamos acelerarlo? Bueno, esa es una pregunta difícil. Por supuesto, nos gusta hacer más trabajo de infraestructura, pero eso cuesta mucho dinero. Así que tenemos un presupuesto, y tratamos de gastar al menos seiscientos mil dólares de dinero en Ely en dólares impuestos cada año, usualmente más que eso. Y eso no va muy lejos. Hacemos unos pocos bloques, tratamos de liberar nuestro dinero y trabajar en el trabajo que la comunidad está haciendo en el estado. En los próximos años, harviles se reembalarán por la comunidad, la comunidad, el estado y la carretera. Y cuando la carretera está abierta, es cuando necesitamos entrar y hacer las cosas que la ciudad posee bajo esas calles. Así que necesitamos aprovechar esos tipos de cosas. Gracias.
Frederica Musgrave. Ha habido estudio y acción tomados en la licencia y regulación del cannabis. ¿Qué más sientes que necesita ser hecho?
Primero de todo, quiero decir que cuando crecí, recibí toda la educación de que la droga de marihuana conduce a drogas duras, y es malo, y todo tipo de cosas. Y durante un periodo de tiempo, especialmente como adulto, aprendí mucho sobre eso. Y he cambiado mi opinión sobre muchas cosas, que debería ser permitido de cierta manera. Y creo que había una persona en el Cónsul, no estoy seguro si fue Al Forsberg, que dio origen a la cuestión de que los jóvenes se adicten a la droga, y eso es preocupante. En respuesta a su pregunta sobre el cannabis, lo que hice después de la reunión de planificación y zonación fue pasar a Stinky Pete's y informarlos, y no he ido a otros lugares vendiendo cannabis, para que me enteren de lo que está haciendo la ciudad. Deberían saber que había un tiempo antes de la audiencia pública y que había entrado, porque había algunos problemas sobre los estándares dobles para las tiendas de licor y las tiendas de cannabis, así como la discriminación contra las fiestas de cannabis en las casas de la gente que no podían hacer el domingo y algunas otras cosas. Mi cosa es que necesito educarme y hablar con la gente que sabe esto. Y espero que Katie allí en el Timber Jay haga la investigación como hizo la última vez para el Cónsul y el cannabis.
Jerome DeBels. La gente ha estado preguntándose qué está pasando en el centro de la comunidad. ¿Cómo aumentaría la transparencia para que los ciudadanos de Ely sepan más sobre el desarrollo y la línea de tiempo, la viabilidad financiera y el progreso del proyecto?
Bueno, creo que el primer problema es que la persona que está haciendo el trabajo allí tiene que conseguir el dinero para avanzar. Él es un ex-Elite, su familia vivió aquí durante muchos años, y quiere construir algo, sabes, con h clores allí y cosas así. Pero el problema es que no hay mucho dinero allí. Justamente hemos salido de una discusión esta noche. La parte norte de Minnesota no recibe prácticamente nada de la ley de la借金， que estaba en el estado. Y la gente necesita dinero de借金 para avanzar. Y si no puedes conseguir el dinero, no puedes avanzar, pero tal vez los periódicos pueden ir y hablar con la persona en cargo, y tal vez puedan obtener más información de él y averiguar qué está pasando. O podemos traerlo ante el Cónsul de la ciudad y luego decirnos lo que están haciendo en ello. Porque no todo el mundo sabe todo, porque pasa mucho en las reuniones que no escuchamos. Sabes, ese es el problema, pero creo que tenemos que dejarlo morir, tratar de hacerlo funcionar y cosas así. Y diría que probablemente habrá hablado con cualquiera, así que si tienes una pregunta, hazlo hablar con él.
Emily Rose. ¿Cómo puede el Cónsul de la ciudad hacer que la recrutación y la entrevista de miembros de la comisión sea más público? ¿Cómo puede el trabajo y los logros de esas comisiones ser más transparentes?
Hola, así que las reuniones del Cónsul de la ciudad, todos son welcome a venir a ninguna de las reuniones de la comisión o las reuniones del Cónsul. Y lo siento si no se ha hecho transparente para todos, pero ustedes son welcome a venir. Una cosa que puede ayudar a hacer más transparente es si publicaríamos, el Cónsul de la ciudad tendría una página en YouTube o sería capaz de publicar algunas de esas reuniones de una manera muy fácil de acceso. Y en cuanto a la recrutación para el Cónsul de la ciudad, creo que deberían estar publicadas en los periódicos como están. Y luego todo el mundo necesita saber que es donde están esas notificaciones. Gracias.
En esta ronda de preguntas, hablamos de la infraestructura envejecida, la regulación del cannabis, el centro de la comunidad, y el trabajo y la responsabilidad de la comisión de la ciudad. Cada candidato ahora tiene hasta 30 segundos para responder a cualquier de esas preguntas o para clarificar su propia respuesta. Empezaremos con Paul.
El tema, la pregunta sobre el C C es interesante porque la ciudad, sabes, construyó una nueva red y ese edificio se volvió vacío. Tratamos de venderlo a un grupo que luego fracasó en última instancia, y fuimos afortunados para obtener un desarrollador que estaba interesado en restaurarlo y reconstruirlo como un hotel. Fuimos afortunados para hacer eso en el sentido de que es un proyecto que es peligroso y requiere un gran capital. No es el trabajo de la ciudad hacer eso, es el premio intercambio de precios. Y él es una persona privada haciendo trabajo con, creo que está cualificado o está cualificado para los créditos de impuestos restantes, lo que hace posible ese proyecto, y la ciudad irá a su lado para apoyar sus esfuerzos, pero en última instancia, son su.
Frederica.
Me dieron dos temas que podía pasar cinco horas hablando sobre. Mi sitio web, Citizens for Transparency, por favor, mirelo, www.eelyminnesota.com/blog/. Está en los volantes que mencioné. Hay mucho sobre estos temas, y luego voy a abordar el centro de la comunidad. Matt Strupp, que obtuvo dos dólares. No sé si el contrato dice que si no tiene más de dos dólares o cien mil, que la ciudad se meterá y pagará por eso.
Jerome.
Primero de todo, no tenemos eso. En segundo lugar, sobre las tuberías, mi familia ha estado aquí durante mucho tiempo. Así que vivimos aquí, y hemos visto lo que pasa con las tuberías y todo lo demás. Sabes, solo va a suceder, y sabes, si tuviéramos cien millones de dólares, podríamos romper todas las tuberías en la ciudad y repararlas. Pero en este punto, sabes, simplemente no tenemos suficiente dinero para romper todas las calles y todo lo demás y repararlas después de que salgan las tuberías.
Emily.
Bueno, primero quiero agradecer a los trabajadores públicos por su respuesta, y disculpa para los negocios que fueron afectados con el desastre del agua. También quiero que todos sepan que para el centro de la comunidad, ese proyecto está siendo activamente vigente en el Comité de Proyectos, así que es un buen lugar para ir y saber más sobre eso. Y gracias.
Bien, otra ronda. En esta ronda, cada candidato tendrá un minuto y medio para responder su pregunta. Y luego, nuevamente, en la conclusión de las cuatro preguntas, cada uno de ustedes se les dará un anfitrión de 30 segundos para discutir cualquier cosa en la ronda. Así que Frederica. Hay casi no opciones de vivienda de sección ocho para individuos de baja ingreso y familias. ¿Qué crees que es la solución a la crisis de vivienda de Ely, especialmente para familias de baja ingreso?
Bueno, sabes, Ely tiene muchos individuos, las familias que necesitan vivienda, la juventud, y también los seniores, y no solo la sección ocho. No que los seniores y la juventud no se ajusten a esa clasificación. Tengo preguntas sobre cómo la ciudad está acercándose al desarrollo de la vivienda en general. Y fui a las reuniones de comunicación abiertas hace un año, y hay un montón de jóvenes. Es como que queremos que los jóvenes se involucren, y tan pronto como se involucren, es como escuchen a nosotros, los viejos. De todos modos, tenían preguntas fantásticas sobre el desarrollo, y preguntas, ¿por qué nos preguntamos y solo aceptamos oficios altos? Creo que la ciudad necesita hablar con la gente en la comunidad, no solo los desarrolladores y los que se han invertido en la vivienda, para llegar a un plan que sea un plan comprensivo que se ajuste con los vecindarios, y que ajuste no solo los vecindarios, pero también al acceso a la ciudad debido a los problemas de transporte y también al comprar. Así que es una cosa más amplia. Odio las preguntas porque es como una respuesta A, B, C, D, y no funciona de esa manera. Y mis maestros en la escuela me odiaron porque escribía todo por esas páginas. Así que es más complicado. Necesitamos hacer algo, pero también necesitamos mirar todo el panorama. Estamos demasiado lento en esta ciudad.
Jerome. Hay un contingente de personas que dirían que porque Ely es diferente de lo que siempre era, está muriendo. ¿Está muriendo Ely?, y ¿cuáles son las mejores estrategias para una infusión de vitalidad?
Bueno, no diría que está muriendo. Nací y crecí aquí cuando, creo que había más de 5.600 personas cuando era joven. Y puedo ver a alguien que fui a la escuela con quien estaba aquí, y que también estaba ocupado con eso. Pero lo que pasó fue que las minas se cerraron, sabes, y todo lo demás, y había problemas de fachada y todo eso. Y no había muchos trabajos buenos, y las familias no pudieron vivir aquí. Quiero decir, puedes criar una familia a diez dólares por hora, y entonces cualquiera que pueda, por favor, dime cómo lo hace. Pero el problema es que tienes que tener dinero para criar a la familia, y tenemos que tener trabajos buenos. Y no sé, la gente está en contra de la minería, por supuesto, mucha gente está en contra. Pero, ¿dónde vamos a conseguir trabajos buenos? Tal vez algunas de las personas que son anti-mineras pueden ayudarnos, ayudar a mis personas que tienen trabajos buenos aquí para que puedan criar a su familia aquí. Soy 73 y voy a, sabes, no sé, voy a tratar eso más largo aquí, pero la cosa es que necesitamos ayuda con la gente para buscar trabajos buenos y cosas. Como dije, la gente no puede criar a su familia a diez dólares por hora, y si la gente cree que puede, hay algo malo, porque la gente ha mudado aquí, quería vivir aquí, y todos se fueron.
Emily. Los padres están preocupados por la disponibilidad de cuidados infantiles en Ely. ¿En qué otras formas puede la ciudad trabajar para resolver los problemas de cuidados infantiles?
Sí, así que hay muchas formas en que el Cónsul de la ciudad puede involucrarse con los problemas de cuidados infantiles, y eso es realmente en la elaboración de políticas. Así que el Cónsul de la ciudad está en cargo de la elaboración de políticas, y así pueden asegurar que las ordenanzas y políticas que pongan en place no obstaculizan a ningún posible empresario de cuidados infantiles que venga. El Cónsul de la ciudad también puede actuar como un liaison para ayudar a encontrar a personas que podrían ser operadores potenciales de cuidados infantiles. Y el Cónsul de la ciudad puede actuar como un patrocinador fiscal para cualquier financiación o otro financiamiento que pueda venir que pueda hacer difícil para el proveedor de cuidados infantiles recibir ese financiamiento ellos mismos.
Paul, pasaré el micrófono. Has estado en el Cónsul durante varios mandatos. ¿Qué ves como tus mayores logros y cuáles son tus mayores frustraciones en tu trabajo en el Cónsul?
Buena pregunta. No realmente he calculado logros, sino específicamente...
¿Puedes poner el micrófono un poco más cerca?
Creo que una de las cosas que es importante para mí es que mantenemos buen gobierno cívico y que somos transparentes. Puede que siempre sea alguien mejor en eso, como pointa Frederica, pero creo que por lo general tenemos un buen gobierno cívico, estamos bien dirigidos, tenemos buenos empleados. Y creo que eso es tal vez parte de nuestro trabajo, mi trabajo. Nervios, las cosas se mueven a la velocidad del gobierno, y hay muchas razones para eso. Un proyecto que necesita, la vivienda, por ejemplo, necesita pasar a través de diferentes comités y luego buscar financiación. Y la vivienda, por ejemplo, no es un problema local, es un estado. Y así es difícil para una pequeña comunidad local como la nuestra actuar, pero tengo ambos logros y frustraciones.
Gracias a todos. En esta ronda de preguntas, hablamos de cuidados infantiles, vivienda, logros y frustraciones de miembros del Cónsul de la ciudad, así como la vitalidad de nuestra pequeña ciudad especial. Y ahora, cada candidato tiene hasta 30 segundos para responder a cualquier de esas preguntas o para clarificar su propia respuesta. Y Frederica, empezaré con usted.
Sí, voy a volver al centro de la comunidad y la biblioteca que el tipo obtuvo dos dólares. Creo que la ciudad necesita priorizar lo que es importante en trabajar con los ciudadanos. Lo que es importante y cómo gastamos nuestro dinero, configurar proyectos, así como Howard's Break y buscando fondos de la IRR. ¿Debería estar buscando fondos para este hotel? Cientos y cientos de miles de dólares, o debería estar buscando fondos para los pequeños negocios en Ely que quieren entradas accesibles y elevadores. Para mí, esa es una prioridad más alta que el hotel.
Bien, y una respuesta a eso, tenemos una configuración de fondos para los negocios y para los locales si quieren mejorar su precio de negocio o sus hogares, para presentar interés. Y si tiene interés, solo vea a Harold. Lo único que quería hablar sobre la vivienda, acabo de venir de una reunión de EDA, y hablamos sobre la vivienda. Hubo 39 millones de dólares que no se dieron para la vivienda, y todo salió al sur. El único que estaba al norte fue Grand Rapids y Silver Bay, y todo el dinero salió al sur. No dieron nada a Ely o a ninguna de estas comunidades locales.
Emily.
Quiero volver a la pregunta sobre la vitalidad de Ely. Así que Ely, no creo que esté muriendo. Hay una nueva energía que siento en nuestra comunidad, y hay muchas personas involucradas. Sé que no hay trabajos que sean de nivel de entrada que crean generacional riqueza. Y creo que eso es muy importante para la vitalidad de nuestra comunidad en el futuro. Y tengo algunas ideas, solo no pude decirles ellas en 30 segundos.
Bien, y Paul, también tendrá 30 segundos para volver a cualquier de los temas de esta ronda.
No, realmente creo que la vivienda es una de las mayores cuestiones que muchos de los miembros de la comunidad enfrentan. Y así es un nudo muy difícil de romper. Somos afortunados, tenemos un ingeniero que es nuestro fiscal, y así es bien formado en cómo diseñar o hacer que estos proyectos continúen. Es muy interesado en ver que lleguen a la completación. Pensamos que estábamos en buena forma con el complejo apartamento que tenemos en marcha, pero no conseguimos dinero para ello. No va a ser construido. Incluso entonces, si lo construimos, tenemos que controlar los costos de que los alquileres sean altos. Gracias, hay mucho de eso.
Gracias a todos. Empezaremos nuestras preguntas de un minuto y medio con Jerome, y en la conclusión de las cuatro preguntas, hararemos la ronda de respuesta de 30 segundos. Jerome, se ha sugerido que el voto de elección por ranked voting para el Cónsul de la ciudad eliminaría la necesidad de una primaria del Cónsul y, por lo tanto, reducir los costos de las elecciones de la ciudad. ¿Qué ves como las ventajas y desventajas de moverse a votar por ranked voting?
Bueno, no estoy seguro porque después de que lleguen las elecciones, tienes la elección presidencial, tienes a tus representantes y todo lo demás. Así que estás lidiando con el estado, estás sentado en el nacional y local, así que no va a hacer diferencia para esta. No creo que lo sea. Creo que deberíamos dejar que la gente tome la decisión por sí misma, ir a la sala, ver quién quiere, y creo que tienen la opción. No creo que debamos decirle a la gente quién votar, deben tener la opción de quién votar. No puedes decirle a la gente, sabes, deben tener este, ese, o ese es mejor, o ese es mejor. Es a la gente para tomar la decisión quién va a estar en el Cónsul.
Gracias. Emily. A pesar de la idea de que estamos en un santuario del clima, el cambio climático posesa una amenaza significativa para la estabilidad económica y el bienestar de los residentes de Ely. ¿Qué puede hacer la ciudad de Ely para comprometerse con el desarrollo de soluciones sostenibles de bajo carbono para las utilidades y infraestructura?
Sí, así que la ciudad de Ely actualmente está trabajando en el Plan de Acción Verde, pero hay mucho más que podemos hacer. Y la primera cosa es que requiere que todos trabajemos como individuos para hacer que suceda, pero como ciudad hay pequeños pasos que podemos empezar a tomar, y la ciudad está trabajando en algo de eso. Eso incluye cambiar las luces de la ciudad a luces LED que son mucho más eficientes. Así que estamos trabajando en eso, todo el proyecto que viene, no puede pasar por la noche. Y así, a medida que pasa el tiempo, podemos empezar a hacer pequeños cambios que hacen un gran impacto en nuestro medio ambiente.
Gracias. Paul, vamos a pasar el micrófono a usted para este próximo. ¿Cómo harías mejor involucrar a la comunidad más amplia, incluyendo los negocios, en actualizar y monitorear el plan comprensivo? ¿Cómo puede la ciudad hacer un mejor trabajo en la reportaje sobre la implementación del plan y los logros?
Esa es una pregunta interesante. Planes comprensivos se hacen cada cinco años o así, luego tienden a poner en un colchón y no lo hacen. Porque las ciudades tienden a responder a las oportunidades y, sabes, amenazas de tipo. Y así, si hay una oportunidad de conseguir dinero para la vivienda, aunque puede que no sea tu prioridad superior, vas por ella. Tienes que ser oportunista en poder lograr las cosas, no solo en el mercado. You have to be opportunistic in being able to accomplish the things, not just in order on the comprehensive plan. So I have mixed feelings about whether we should actually follow tightly a comprehensive plan. But I know the planning process is valuable. You go through it, and you evaluate kinds of opportunities. And you try to articulate the vision to the city so that you know, that you wind up that you're moving in the direction of having a city that you want to. That's.
Thank you. Frederica, the city has come a long way in dealing with some of our blighted properties. There are still, however, a number of abandoned homes with unkempt lawns that affect the property value of those homes around them. Should the city become more assertive in requiring that derelict property owners adhere to zoning requirements? Why or why not?
Thanks for the question. This is the thing that bothers me deeply because I look across my street and I see five unoccupied houses, and there's like 10, 12 houses. One of them is going to be on the market soon. There is a, well, again, I want to refer you to that website, okay? Because I will talk about a whole bunch of things. There is a section regarding two paragraphs that are being engorged in the comprehensive plan. Okay, and that one topic, open space and environment protecting that on page 27, we haven't mentioned yet. But the, and I've forgotten the page for the blighted properties that's in the comp plan. But in the comp plan, it says what the city is supposed to do, which is consider purchasing the properties. I have been door knocking, door to door, and going to small businesses, talking about the city. And there are many buildings that are not occupied and many in need of repair. So we have quite a bit in here. And I think the city needs to step up and deal with the blighted housing before saying we're going to develop all these housing complexes. I think there's a tremendous amount.
Thank you. In this round of questioning, we talked about blighted property, a comprehensive plan for the city, low-carbon solutions for utilities and infrastructure, and ranked choice voting. Each candidate now has up to 30 seconds to respond to any of these questions or to further clarify their own answer. We will start with Jerome.
Well, with blighted property, we have torn some houses down. We've gone to the IRR for money, help, get us, get us the funds to tear houses down. We had, we give people warnings on it. And after so many warnings, then we go and we do something about it. You just can't remember that somebody's property and tear it down. And then, because you will get sued really quickly. So you don't want the city immediately be in hump for a million dollars because you made a mistake. So you have to keep, okay, thank you.
Emily?
I also want to speak about the blighted properties. So one thing that we all need to know is that there is a process that everyone has to go through in order to resolve those blighted properties. And it does take a long time. But another thing that the city can do to work on this is budget more in our budgeting process that can be used to tackle some of these blighted properties. Although I have to say, it is quite expensive to resolve a blighted property. But if you start to budget far, we can start to tackle it.
Paul, you are up next. And we'll start your 30 seconds once you get that microphone.
Okay, I'm a fan of ranked choice voting. I wish you could do it. I think the primaries are too often decided by such a minority of voters that they tend to skew the actual beliefs of the citizenry. So I wish you could move in that direction. That's not an easy thing to do. Most people are used to the process we have now. And as Jerome described, comfortable choosing the result out of the people that are there. But I think the primary system is problematic for this ranked choice and solid.
Emily, Frederica?
I want to talk about climate change and also the community comp plan. And first of all, on the comp plan, I believe that the city council should have taken leadership on this rather than delegating it to the commissions, basically saying, this is what I want you to focus on. What do the citizens need? I analyzed the comp plan and Visions for the City, www.eleminnesota.com. And basically, I did a word search on climate and a few other things. And you'll notice that the city and the comp plan still says, oh, we might have a climate change. Let's deal with it.
All right, round number four. Again, each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer the question. And then again, you'll get the 30 seconds to circle back. Emily, we'll start with you. Under what circumstances is it appropriate for the city to weigh in on state or national issues they have no jurisdiction over? And what community member input should the council seek prior to issuing any statement on those issues?
So the city does not have any jurisdiction to make matters on state or any federal issues. The one thing that the city can do is write a letter. But before writing a letter, I do think it's very important that the city puts it out. There is a public forum to get input from the city before they make a decision to send a letter on behalf of the whole city. It is a whole city issue if we're going to send a letter on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Paul? All right, Paul. What do you feel your constituents see as the greatest need in Ely? And what will you commit to doing to address that need?
I think it depends who you talk to. There's a variety of constituencies in Ely. And they all have different expressions of what they think is most important. For quite some time, childcare wasn't important. It still is to some degree. We made some progress on that. And now I think our greatest need, from, I don't know, from what my constituents, I think that's an interesting point, I'll try to be quick. I don't have any citizens call me or express their interest to me outside of the council. There's, I mean, there's not a lot. I mean, I have phone numbers published in the, in the website of the city. Citizens do not involve themselves by giving feedback to me, at least on the council. I don't think many counselors really have, are bothered with people calling them. So I tend to go with what I think is the greatest need. And I think that we're seeing this housing because you can't, jobs depend on housing. There are people who drive an hour to drive to Ely. It used to be you had to drive an hour to their job, um, range. It's, it's, I don't know what we'll do. Money isn't there. We'll keep practicing it though.
Frederica, if elected, how will you seek input from your constituents so that you're representing their needs rather than your own wishes?
Great question. Basically, I've been going door to door right now. It's taken a lot of time. People invite me in their houses, want to sit on the porch and talk and say, no one has ever contacted me before. And they look over my flyer, and we talk about that and other issues. And so basically, to get input, you have to go to the people. Government is here to serve the people. It's not about political games and politics and popularity voting. Go to the people and ask them. Go to the small businesses. And that's where I've gotten info from them and all kinds of ideas and impressions about council. Go to the people. And that's what I intend to do. And I love the open communications meetings that Angela Campbell and Adam Bisby have hosted. And Paul showed up in there where you get input from citizens. But it's not enough because many of them feel they are, and I, and I hear it from them, they're not Ely because they weren't born here. Or they won't be listened to because they support mining or don't support mining. We have to stop doing that and just listen to the people, let them talk. And let me tell you, the most beautiful stuff for people on this side of the spectrum and the other. I, I'm running for nonpartisan office, and it's great listening to the passion of people this way, that way, old and young. And I intend to continue with that. And I think most people know, you know, I'm pretty determined. If I say I'm going to do something, boy, I'll do it.
Jerome, what community, community needs do you feel are so great that you would vote to raise taxes in order to make sure the need is addressed?
Well, I guess they've said a hundred times tonight, housing is very important. And we've got, we've got to have more housing for people to move here. And so we can lower taxes so there's more people on the tax roll. But the real problem, I think, is we, when we are looking at this, we have a lot of senior citizens in this community. And the senior citizens can't afford to have their taxes raised a lot because they don't have a lot of money. They've got, they're living off social security and other things. And you can't raise their taxes, you don't, so they can't live. And a lot of people, you don't want to put anybody on the street. And that's very bad if you did. And I don't, I don't want to do, ever do that because I don't think that's ever lawful. But I want to make sure people can afford to live and things. But I think that housing is probably one of the biggest needs. And I think we can get some money through grants and stuff because Harold's working on that stuff. And so I think that's the way we'll go about it. And the city don't want that. We don't want to raise the taxes of citizens of Ely. We can't help it if the county does. But we can't raise taxes because people need to live.
Thank you. So in this round, we talked about whether the council should address issues outside of this jurisdiction, the city's greatest needs, seeking constituent input, and what needs might justify a tax increase. Emily, you can go ahead with your 30 seconds.
I want to start by talking about getting input from constituents. As a candidate running, I definitely want to hear all of your inputs. So please approach me. I am out in the community a lot, so feel free to approach me up in, out in the community as well. As far as our greatest need in Ely, I see that there are three big ones. There's childcare, jobs that create generational wealth, and housing. And I think tackling all three together will provide the biggest impact to our city.
Pass the mic down to Paul, please.
I've been on the city budget committee for a long time. And I think it's important that we recognize that the majority, or almost the majority of the people in Ely who have fixed incomes and raising taxes is a difficult thing to do. And we know that you're putting a hurt on some people when you do that. So we concentrate on providing the basic services of city government. We have a play by this budget. We have, we have, I'm sorry.
Frederica?
That's a speech to be had. Regarding input from citizens, as I said, I've been door knocking. I don't look at lawn signs. I go up to the second floor, looking around for apartments. You can't tell from the front. And going by the street, the other side, someone's home, I talk to them. I get emails from people. I get phone calls from people. And I have previously, those of you who know me, I've been recording council meetings since November 2023 and speaking in front of councils since the spring of 2023. People email and call me. Now I've got a new batch. And what I need to do is make certain, I continue that content.
And Jerome?
Well, you know, some people can see it's kind of difficult for me to go door to door. I got crippled about 10 years ago. But what happens is when I'm walking down the street, I'll talk to anybody. My wife, in fact, is mad at me. She had a baseball bat. Because she says, why don't you get going? I said, somebody wants to talk to me. And she'll get mad at me. But I said, well, if they want to talk to me, I'm going to talk to them. I don't care, you know? It doesn't mean that matter who you are, I'm going to talk to you. You know, thank you.
Thank you all. This is round five. We'll continue the four and a half minute and a half to answer each question and then 30 seconds to comment on anything discussed in the round. This round will begin with Paul. A number of city services, such as the library and senior center, are as actively utilized by township residents as by city residents. Is there a better system for funding so that the funding somehow matches utilization?
We ask surrounding townships to contribute to our efforts. The library is a good example. The city of Ely receives most of its funding from a state source called local government aid. And that funds a majority of the city's spending. Townships don't get that. But then with that money, we're obligated in a sense to provide services to the residents of the township that simply don't have the resources to do that. And so I, I think that. I'm losing my train of thought here. I'm sorry, a little frazzled tonight.
Thank you. Frederica, small towns across the country have struggled to remain vibrant in a changing economy. And many have succeeded by finding a specialty niche for the community. Examples include history, outdoor recreation, scientific study, the arts. Do you see a specific niche for Ely to focus its development and marketing on?
Well, I wouldn't say A, meaning one. We have so many fantastic things here. I don't know, I mean, people are saying Ely's dying, dying. I don't think so. We have a fantastic arts community, thanks to Ian and others, that bring people in to, to see the performances. We have a lot going for us, so that's where we are. And of course, the Wolf Center. I didn't know what to wear today. We've got the Bear Center, we've got the Boundary Waters. We've got all kinds of things going on here. So there's a lot to work on. And I'd really like to see Ely as a model city, perhaps the Moorestown model for sustainability, which would bring people to come, the people coming in. I think we need to build up our college to get more students, to bring more people in. And one of the things that hasn't been addressed yet in terms of the environment and nature is, we have a very active Ely field naturalist group here. And they are being recognized in comp plans or funding and a few other things. People come here because of nature and for viewing, not just the noisy activities, which I understand people want to join. We've got so much going on here. And we've got a great Chamber of Commerce, as well as, right now, it's out of my mind, the other group that's going on.
Thank you. Jerome, maintaining ambulance service and funding of that service has been at the forefront of discussion for some time in Ely. What do you think is the best solution to make sure we continue to provide this essential service?
Well, I worked at the hospital for 17 years, and I understand the problem with the ambulance service. We used to have where people worked in the hospital and they worked on the ambulance when a call came in. And that, a lot of the times, isn't happening now because now they got their own building. I think we all work together and try to find a good solution. I don't want to see, you know, it's raised, they were talking about raising a tax and property taxes on everybody a big amount. And I don't want to see that happen because I don't think the older people can afford it. So what I think is, what I think is, we're just going to keep sitting down and keep going over it and see what we can do to make this ambulance a better thing for us. Because with the town of Ely and with the town of Morris, city of Ely, town of Morris, the town of Law Lake and everything around here, we need to, we need to have a good ambulance service.
Thank you. Emily, businesses in Ely struggle to maintain an adequate number of employees. What is the city's role in helping to solve that problem? And do you have any immediate thoughts about how that could be done?
It's definitely a problem that we see in most of our businesses in town. The city's role can be in helping make sure that our city is opening, open and inviting for those who want to come and live here. And we can provide that so that those businesses can attract those people. But one problem that when people come in for businesses is the housing issue. And so working to also limit barriers for housing is another way that we can make sure we get more employees in our town.
Thank you. We talked about funding city services in an equitable way, whether Ely could become a niche community, maintaining ambulance services and worker recruitment and retention. Now we'll start out the 30 second rebuttal with Paul.
The ambulance service issue is the kind of issue that faces many small communities across Minnesota. We're not unique, but that's a tough nut to crack. I think Jerome was right. He says that we can work together, we can find a solution. The state just threw somebody in the cockpit, so. But it's financially stressed. If we can come to a spot where we can cooperate with Babbitt and Tower, we can improve our ambulance service and have increased reimbursement rates. But we need to find ways to work together to accomplish that.
Frederica?
Just too many things. Just too many things to talk about. The ambulance, please refer to my website. I recorded the meetings and commented on, and I also talked to the citizens. There's a big issue of not getting information, not getting audits. I know personally with the accounting firm, I never got a bill from the ambulance service two years ago. And when I called for a bill four times, they wanted my credit card. The other thing, we have tremendous amenities here in Ely. Theater at night, the movie theater. Thank you.
Jerome?
How are you through the ambulance one at me? But like I said, the big problem is we've got to get everybody working together. We can't have people saying, well, I don't want to do this, or I don't want to do that. Let's take care of the people who live here and live in the surrounding area. Let's not throw anybody under the bus. Let's let everybody have a chance that if they get sick, to be picked up and taken to the hospital. And that's the only way we're going to keep a vibrant community if we're in a good hospital and a good school system.
And finally, Emily?
Well, there's so much to unpack in this one. Okay, so one, let's make Ely an arts town. Let's also focus on tourism. And I still think that there's room for other industry that provides that generational wealth. I also want to touch on the ambulance issue. Part of the problem with the ambulance is due to Medicare rules. And so currently, it's impossible for the hospital to absorb the ambulance. And so if we all work together with the other towns and the hospital were able to absorb all the other towns' ambulances, we would be able to increase those reimbursement rates.
All right. The next round will start with Frederica. We're going to keep the same model going. Frederica? If elected, what are your personal goals for what you would like to accomplish as a member of council?
Okay, I have it kind of outlined on the flyer I've been dropping off and sharing with people. And it's establishing policies and procedures and following the rules. And it's not just codes of conduct and ethics and conflict of interest. I think the meetings should be streamed, all of them, live, 24/7 to people. I want to work for that. People, well, I couldn't see the council meeting Monday, and I'll never get a copy of that because I don't have midco cable. Everything should be streamed and accessible. In terms of policies and procedures, I work for the government in purchasing. We are not following sending out three bids. You know, we're talking about increasing taxes and everything. The city isn't being careful. If there's an expensive item, you send three bids out. You don't contact one company. And I, on my website, have mentioned that again and again. I'm really concerned about how people are hired on or hired, appointed to commissions. Some of them can serve for nine years and they're never interviewed. They fill out a little application form, their history. Oh, that person, I know them. Or, oh, that person was born in Ely, I'm going to put them on the commission. Or, oh, that's a friend of mine. So we have some people serving on like four commissions. And I talked to council about that starting in the spring 2023. The only time they started listening to me is when I reported what happened.
Thank you. Jerome? Council members are not expected to be experts in everything that comes before the council. What do you feel are your strongest areas of expertise in order to advance the work at the council?
Well, as I said before, I've done a lot alone during the city. I worked with a lot of kids and everything else. So one of my favorite, or my biggest, I guess we should say, working with people. I was very successful with working with kids and things like that. I am a paraprofessional in Babbitt, and I work with kids in Babbitt. And I work with community, and I ain't afraid to talk to anybody. I think one of the biggest things we have to do is not just brush everybody off. We have to talk to people. And I'm willing to talk to anybody, it's free. Some people might think I'm crazy, but every time I go by, I say hi. And they think, a lot of people say, what's saying hi to people? They give me a look, and I'm just that kind of person. I grew up here, and I think Ely is a friendly community, and I think we should keep it a friendly community. And everybody should be friendly and treat each other with dignity and respect.
Emily? As one of our younger residents, what special experience and viewpoints can you bring to enhance the vision and responsiveness of the council?
Yeah, so I think my age is actually quite a benefit because I still have a lot of really big enthusiasm to get lots done. And I have the energy to be involved in lots of different activities around town where I get to talk to people and I'm helping the community. And I think that bringing that energy to council will help bring inclusive energy where people who are younger will feel more inclined to come to council, speak their thoughts, and have been heard.
Pass the mic down to Paul, please. More and more often, communities have to demonstrate that they're open and welcoming to diverse populations in order to draw new businesses and new residents. What are Ely's strengths and weaknesses in that area? What could the council do to ensure that we're a welcoming community?
I think everybody knows that there's huge competition for businesses to locate in their communities. What Ely has going is Ely. People want to live here. And so there are people who come and want to locate. Many of the people who are employed in Ely now, I couldn't give you a percentage, I wish I could, are working at home. And that's a big drop for Ely and because people can live and enjoy this area as well as be gainfully employed. That's a strength we have. We also have a strong support for startup businesses. People don't always know about it, but we do. And, you know, it's one of those things, once you get involved, you get to be surprised at how much support. We have an economic developer who meets with individual businesses, startups, and existing businesses to access the programs like under the IRRB. Some, one popular one is the BRRRR, which is the Business Energy Retro program on IRRB. And so those kinds of things make small businesses, or make Ely attractive to small businesses, but still a tough sell. Small businesses are tough business. You know, success rates require a lot, a lot of hard work. But it is a great place to enjoy it while you do that.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so topics in this round included candidate expertise and skills, creating a diverse and welcoming community, and goals for work as a council member. Our 30-second responses will begin with Frederica.
I'm going to go with the welcoming and also getting people here. We haven't talked enough about the development going on in Tower. I don't know if you've been over there. And it's just really awesome what Orland, Krista, and others have been doing in that city. And it's not just putting housing in, it's setting up jobs, hopefully, that will be there here. Aurora, that we build up a community, and it's well-planned. That's what Ely needs to start doing, is well-planned development.
And Jerome?
Well, I'm going to respond to that. We're trying to do well-planned development, but the biggest problem is we have to have funds. Like I said, $39 million we're giving out for housing and everything else in the state. And we can get hardly anything up north to communities. And we've got to get, we've got to get them to understand that Ely is outstate, need money too. So that's the way it's got to be.
Emily?
So it is my personal mission to make new residents feel welcome in this town, and I hope that I've done that, and I want to continue to personally make new residents feel welcome. As far as expertise, I am a finance person. Currently, my job is helping small businesses start stabilizing and expand. So I think I can bring a lot to our table to help small business owners.
We'll pass the microphone down to Paul so he can have his 30-second opportunity.
Well, in some cases, I tell the surrounding councillors to be careful what you wish for. The job of a councillor is to work hard and review our agendas and these supporting documents, often on over 100 pages. So you need to be prepared with all of the things on that agenda, review all of the documentation, as well as attend committee meetings. So it's not a small task to be a city councillor. So be careful what you wish for.
Thank you all for your comments. This is the round seven of questions, so our second to last round. You'll each have a minute and a half, starting with Jerome. And then following the four questions, there'll be the 30-second rebuttal time. Jerome? What, if any, role does the council have in oversight of the goals and accomplishments of the separate city departments? What oversight should they have? And how should those department accomplishments be reported to the citizens?
Well, we have pretty much all the oversight over all the committees and things. All that, they come to us and they send their reports from their commission meetings or whatever meetings they have. And we try to make, deal with what we got and try to make the best decision possible. There's a lot of committees in the city, really, you would imagine how many. And I, for 31 years, I've been on pretty much everyone. And you've got to look at everything. And then you've got to look at what is going to, if it's going to help Ely or if it's going to help the people of Ely, or if it makes Ely a better place to live. And that's what we're working for, to make this a better town so people will want to come here. And, you know, there's, you know, a lot of people that would like to move to Ely, but they can't find a good job. So we've got, one of our people looking at things, and Harold going out and getting, you know, funds for that and for housing and for whatever projects or for roads or... And we do, the city of Ely also, you've got to understand there's a, you know, follow-through for money that goes into a lot of these trails around here. City of Ely gets the money and they just pay out the things from the government. But they don't get the money, they just, their money comes to them and it's sent out. So we do a good job as a city in helping other things go about.
Emily? What infrastructure projects do you see as priorities in the very near future?
So one infrastructure project that is currently in process that is very important is updating our city's water line. As we all know, that was quite a problem recently. So that is something that is very important for us to update. Yeah, I think all of the city's infrastructure at some point will need to get updated. And it's truly trying to find the money to make those projects happen.
Paul? We hear a lot of conversation about how we need the mines to bring jobs. But even if approved, those jobs would be slow in coming. What other ways should the community focus its efforts in job creation in order to ensure a diverse economy?
I think the most important thing you can do is work to achieve a quality of life, as we have been here in Ely. So the people want to live here, and I would say they bring their job with them. That's the biggest source of growth and funding in the city is people who work at home or work remotely. That's important. So they need to be attractive to people who want to do that. I think other than that, people... Economic growth in Ely will depend upon solidifying the tourism industry. Tourism is generally not known for providing livable wages. And so it's always been heavy industry, like mining, that we've counted on. As we wait for that, if in fact it comes, I think we need to focus on quality of life issues here in Ely. No one wants to live in a community without a functioning hospital, a functioning school. Ely's fortunate to have an airport. So those kinds of infrastructure things become important in the economic development of the city.
Frederica? What can the council do to support small business in Ely?
Well, number one, ask them. When I went to downtown to the businesses, door to door, just like I did to houses, no one's ever visited me from council. No one's ever asked me. How can, and I go out and I say, the purpose of government is to serve people in the community. And then I'll have a discussion with the people, half the store owners apparently don't live in Ely, and they're telling me, don't waste your time, I don't vote here. And I have to tell them, they are Ely, and government should be serving their needs. And they should be asking them directly, not indirectly. Okay, the second thing is, there are a lot of great things going on in Ely. One of them is the Tuesday group. But also, I look at other things. There are other organizations that are meeting and discussing stuff with small businesses, and I believe Emily's going to address that too. But the Boundary Waters Connect, as I understand it, on November 18th, I'm really excited about this, is sponsoring a meeting and inviting people to come from profits, nonprofits, businesses. And this is really exciting, and I want to listen, I want to learn. So go where the info is, don't wait for it to come to you.
Our topics this round were department oversight and reporting, infrastructure priorities, job creating, and how to support small business. You'll each have 30 seconds to respond, starting with Jerome.
Well, I have to disagree on that point that we don't help small businesses. As I told you before, we got a loan thing, a 2% loan for either residents or for businesses. They can come up and ask for it, and we give them a loan, and that helps them do different things. And I don't believe that all businesses said, we don't help them at all. We do help the businesses in Ely, and we do give them that nice loan so they don't have to pay 7%, 8% interest. So I disagree with the point that we don't help the businesses.
Emily?
Speaking with the constituents recently, they told me that they thought a good opportunity for jobs in Ely could be trying to get state jobs out of big cities and into rural areas. So I think that's one thing that the city of Ely could do, is try to decentralize some of those state jobs. I also think Ely has lots of opportunity in the tech industry to help make that happen. And yeah.
Pass that over to Paul, who will have 30 seconds to elaborate on his previous answer or comment on the other topics.
You know, Ely did a good job in decentralizing state jobs when we built the Department of Revenue down on Miners Drive. And then further, when those jobs are set remotely from there to people's homes. So I agree with Jerome. I think we have an active small business support program. In some ways, we've been told it's the end of the iron range that we help businesses start. Going into business is a tough thing, and so support is necessary and important.
And finally, Frederica?
Well, one of the things I've noticed is the city doesn't prioritize needs. You list all the needs and people in terms of funding projects, in terms of supporting seniors, because the seniors are more than just the senior center. That's all I hear about the senior center. Regarding documents, I, as everyone knows who's on my BCC list or goes to the website, I really look at the documents posted for city meetings. And there are no attachments to committee meetings, so you really don't know what they're talking about. We need to improve that.
All right, folks, this is our final round before we go into the closing statements. And we'll start with Emily. There are concerns that motorized recreation is being approved on an overabundance of trails around the city. Do you see this as an issue? Are there adequate quiet places for recreation in the city?
Motorized recreation does have a significant hand in helping our tourism during the shoulder seasons. So it's very hard to limit that when we know that up here we need lots of people still coming during our shoulder season. However, I do think that having public forums where we can limit and have public input on where those trails are located will help our city.
We'll pass the microphone down to Paul. Right, Paul? There are concerns that there are too many Airbnbs in the city that are tying up housing that might otherwise be available as rentals for year-round residents. Where do you stand on that issue? And what do you see as needed in the taxing and regulation of those properties?
Is that a question my failure to me? I oppose the expansion of Airbnbs in Ely for the simple reason that it takes housing away from people who like to live here. Airbnbs can cause a lot of damage to a community's infrastructure in the sense of people wanting to sign up and live in rentals. And so that's why I was opposed to them. I'm not opposed entirely. When we first set up the license system, it was 36 units that were approved. And over time, then I think I've helped the council understand that we need to have less than, we lowered it to 25. I do welcome the money that people put into those, sometimes older houses. And so you welcome the investment, but you have to be very careful about the impact that it has on... But you have to be very careful about the impact that it has on neighborhoods. I wouldn't want Airbnb next to me. I have grandchildren who come, and having people come and go every night, I think is an issue not only for noise, but for security.
Frederica? What do you feel you can do on the council to encourage more focus on green energy and green jobs?
Well, one of the things I like to tell people is speak in front of council. And I've gotten a few people to do that. We have some experts here who have the details to present to council. I don't know why I should be looking at the audience, not you guys. Anyway, we have a fabulous climate control group, sustainability group, also Cure, Minnesota Cure. And they have done so much research. And I'd like to see them not only presented at council, but also at the committee meetings. And I've been, as I say, I look over the minutes and stuff like that. And I'm really happy to see that there are little changes being made in terms of the lighting and other things for less use of electricity and saving energy and recycling. We need to look to the experts. And again, if they speak, I notice that in council. If people come in front of council and speak as well as the commissions, things happen. It's not what I say. And basically, I'd like to see more of that. Because we got great people, great experts. You talk about having experts. We have great experts here, and they can pull in really good ones too.
Jerome, many of our residents who retired here have to move away as they get to the point where they may require more services. They take that tax base with them. What do you see as priorities in terms of the unmet needs of seniors? And what is the council's role in finding solutions?
Well, I'll tell you a little story. A long time ago, when they built that housing for the senior citizens on Washington Street, somebody got mad at me because I voted for it. And they ran against it for council, spent thousands of dollars, and they lost. The thing for senior citizens is we need, we need where they can go. They can't take care of their own houses anymore. They can't remove snow. They can't cut grass or anything else. You need more housing for senior citizens. And we need services. We got a good hospital here, and we also got other services available. And comedy got services and everything else. There's buses that come to town and bring people through and everything else. So I think what's important part is we have to keep continuing to get services for senior citizens. We have to make them know that they're cared for because, you know, in other countries, senior citizens are looked up as deities. And they're looked at as people who are really important in our community and everything else. And senior citizens, I'm a senior citizen. So I think senior citizens are being taken care of. And I think we all, we all should be friendly to them too. You know, because sometimes when you see a senior citizen walking down the street, you know, say hi.
Thank you, everyone. So this round included topics about outdoor recreation, Airbnbs, green energy and jobs in the community, and senior services. Emily, you can get started with your 30-second rebuttal.
Yeah, so I won't touch on the Airbnb subject. This is a very important subject as there is a lack of housing in our town. And so one thing that we can do, and it's in city council's power, is to enact a stricter moratorium on residential zones and potentially input a moratorium in commercial zones. And as to what that number would be, I think I would need to pull in some experts to learn more about that. But it would be a topic to explore.
And we'll pass the microphone down to Paul.
I'll go back to that Airbnb thing because it's the thing, I think, that people... We enjoy Airbnbs when we rent them in other communities. But it's one of the things we have to be so careful here. The idea that it takes housing away from people who want to live here is the critical determinant there. We already have a moratorium on Airbnbs in residential zones. We don't in the commercial zone, and maybe that's an idea we should pursue. But historically, places like Dogfitters would rent to people above their storefronts and things like that. So regulating in commercial districts is more difficult.
And Frederica?
I'd love to see more families just going door-to-door, door-knocking. It's just beautiful to hear the laughter with kids. And regarding the housing, we have so many unoccupied houses, you wouldn't believe it. And I think we need to do something about that. And I think the city just needs to tell us how many unoccupied houses and do some kind of incentive to have those people finally sell off the house or fix it up, something.
I'm trying to senior citizens issue again. When I was younger, I delivered meals on wheels to senior citizens. And I used to go to this one lady's house, and I'd walk in and give her a meal. And she'd ask me if I could stay and watch her play the piano and stuff. And I would do that. And I think more people ought to give their time to help senior citizens and stuff and to recognize and make sure, you know, you feel good about it.
Thank you all. Each candidate now has a minute and a half for their closing statement. We will start with Paul.
The thing I was gonna put in the housing discussion is, anybody here tried to rent an apartment in Ely recently? Find anything? Yeah, it's very difficult to find. And so I think that that sort of demonstrates the need. In my time in Ely, and over in my time at the council, I've seen Ely change over time. And I think every community does that. Some people do cry that. And I look forward to sort of the new energy that people, the young people bring to Ely. I think that Ely is changing for the better. And I think that we have a good, solid basis to continue that in city government. We have the support of organizations at the state level and at the regional level. And we have active groups. Think of the multitrails that we've created in the last few years. And so that's all a basis, built on the basis of volunteers. And so I think Ely is set up for a good future because we have a good population. I think that needs of senior citizens will become more important as people get older like I do and want to continue to live here. I welcome their support at the election. I hope I can continue to serve the people of Ely.
Frederica, you have a minute and a half for your closing statement.
Hey, I'm gonna try and talk fast. Okay, I'm reading from my flyer. Frederica believes in balanced growth and development that reflects the needs of our local small businesses and residents, respects the reasons we moved here, matches up with present visions and evolving future needs, provides safe, accessible, and lifestyle options for our diverse community and tourists, including passive hobbies and activities like bird watching and dog walking, integrates healing green space for humans, birds, and our pollinator friends, springs from community user needs instead of developer profits, demonstrates balanced commitment by a project staff, commissioner, efforts, and dollars. Seniors aren't all disabled and can't move around. I've talked to quite a few of them. And some of them are interested in getting activities. And I'm hoping to do a second round and visit them. And if you look at the housing that's set up, again, I talk about healthy healing. You don't just put a building up. You don't just talk about senior center or housing. I want to mention several things. You brought up 2% interest for small businesses. What's the difference between that and going to IRRR asking for hundreds and hundreds and thousands of dollars for the hotel? I'm certain they don't have a 2% interest rate when they get the funds from IRRR. There's a big difference. Who do you serve in this community? The developers or the small businesses that are here? And I would like to point out, I have lots of times, like, Babbitt is doing well.
Frederica?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I appreciate it. I've served on the council for a long time. I would appreciate your vote. I, like I said before, I work for the citizens of Ely. I don't, I'm not a special person or I'm not anything special in this community. I grew up here. I've been here for 72 years, so I've had my 73 years of life. I think the city of Ely is important to me. I got a lot of friends here and people I know. The biggest thing, I think, is that we have to work as a community to make this place a good place. I don't think we got so many people angry at each other for something like mining and the BWC and everything else. We've got to work together to make sure Ely is a good community. And we've got to, we've got to help each other out and stuff. And on the senior citizens, yeah, a lot of us are senior citizens. So we've got to help them too. But we've got to make sure we're taking care of the people who are here and stuff. And we had, since I've been on city council, I can't remember how many mayors and council people I've served with. But a lot of them had a lot of great ideas and stuff like this. And we try to be smart about spending the city of Ely's money. And we don't like to raise taxes. And I don't like to raise taxes because I'm a taxpayer too. So, but I think we've got to, we've got to just keep going forward in the future and make sure Ely is a good place to live.
I'm so thankful to live in this community and to call this my home and my forever home. So thank you all for making this community somewhere that I want to live. I am someone who is trying to provide an inclusive and welcoming ethos and bring that along with my financial background to help the city tackle all these challenging issues that we bring forth. I'm committed to listening to all of your voices and working towards a diverse local economy where we can promote generational wealth. I want to make sure that I'm a transparent person in this community who really takes into account everyone's opinions and considerations. I do have some materials in the lobby if you are interested in any of those. Thank you all so much for coming tonight.
All right, thank you to our four candidates for their thoughtful answers to the questions. Fix the AEW and the Rotary here in Ely for sponsoring this and to the public for providing so many great questions. I know I learned a lot that was quite illuminating. And as a small business owner, I was thrilled to hear your answers. So I think there's a lot of people like that out here. Thank you to VCC, Minnesota North College, Verbalian Campus, for providing the space for this important community event. And thanks to all of you for coming. This is the second event in two weeks here, and the turnout has been great. I would like to encourage you again to grab a handful of people after this. Go have a beer, try and grab some people you disagree with maybe, and talk this stuff through. Because we are all members of this community. And we do, over and over, it was reiterated, well, we got to do something, and we got to do it together. So really encourage you all to do that. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Cast your vote when the time comes, and have a great night.